I'd like to call to order the regular town council meeting for Wednesday, June 22. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
More call?
Mike Orellio.
Here.
Brian Blazek.
Present.
Wayne Pondinas.
Present.
Michael Schilling.
Here.
Gerald Swetts.
Here.
Joe Wizewati.
Here.
David Westland.
Present.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
What comment you can add?
I don't think so.
Okay, we will move on to item number four, approval of the minutes. We have the special study session minutes for May 11, the regular council meeting minutes for May 25, and the special meeting on June 8. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, Mike. Support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Questions, comments, or corrections? Then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Those are approved, five to zero. Item number five is public hearing. Joe?
This is for the resolution for the additional appropriations. Beth, did you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah?
I guess we start with our attorney.
The proofs of publication are in order and compliant with Indiana law.
Okay. And Beth, opening remarks?
You received, and I have not counted them, but several requests for additional appropriations from various different departments. They each provided explanations as for their reasoning for needing the additional appropriations. Would you like to go over them individually, or have you had ample time to review them?
Well, I think they came out early enough, but do you have any other questions? If not, we'll open it to the floor for the public comment. Any public comment on the appropriations, Resolution 2022-06-22A? Calling twice? Calling three times. Okay, we'll close the floor to public comment. And I will look for a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-06-22A.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
One second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Item number six, old business, A, ordinance number 1771. Joe?
This is before the council for adoption on second reading. It would take effect immediately upon passage. This is the ordinance, or many of the salary ordinance, for the position of Parks and Recreation Superintendent.
Okay. So this was considered last month, so it's up for adoption this month. Questions and comments on ordinance 1771? And I will look for a motion to adopt ordinance 1771?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That is approved, four to one. Item number seven is new business, which is a bid opening for the Community Crossing Matching Grant.
So you have three responses. The first one's from Reeve Riley. The second one is from Milestone Contractors. Their base bid is $2,346,891.55. And the last one is from Passion Nielsen and Associates.
All right, so we've got the three bids. Questions or comments?
So we're certain that the milestone bid is inclusive of everything, the other two?
Well, I think at this point, they'd have to have the engineer look at that. Haas and Associates will review the bids and make a recommendation.
Okay. That goes one's way less.
Yeah, so the motion will be to review the bids with the engineer, Public Works, and then authorize the town manager to make a decision on which way to go with that. That normally is the way we would do that, but with the three bids, I just wanted to open up to any questions, if there are questions or comments first. All right, so how do you want that worded motion?
Motion to accept the bids, take them under advisement.
Right. That's fine. Take them under advisement, refer to staff, and authorize, if that's what you're doing, you don't want to wait for another meeting.
No.
You want to authorize the town manager to execute the lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Questions, comments? If not, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Item number C is financial matters, RTPs.
Could you back up?
I'm sorry?
To B?
Did I miss something?
B. Item B?
85th Street.
Seven B.
Oh. Seven B.
Are there other bids there? Do we have the specifications or done?
Yeah. Matt is on the phone right now, so if he wants to discuss the 85th Avenue bid specs and the letting for that.
Good evening, council. Matt Manial, Haas and Associates here. So we provided last Friday the big documents, which include the specifications and the plans. We are in the process of finalizing our internal QCQA checks. Those documents are 95% complete, basically. We're going to advertise on July 1st and July 8th, so our intention is to provide the final contract documents on the 30th, the day prior to that, to the clerk's office, as well as town manager and Public Works. This is just a motion to authorize us to advertise for bids.
Okay. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Questions or comments? Then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Okay. All right, now we'll move on to item C, which is financial matters of the corporation. Request to purchase? Beth?
I did send by email two additional requests to purchase that didn't make it in the original packet. Those are on an emergency need for that culvert conflict on US 41. So those are included in this list. You have before you three RTPs from Corin Maine, two from Boonder Electric, two from Ferguson Waterworks, one from Hawk Enterprises, one from Red Bud Landscape, one from Rico, one from Monsito Inc., one from Precision Fence, and one from Sutton Asphalt, all totaling Yes, I said Hawk Enterprises. Yep.
Are there questions or comments on these?
Yeah, we had a lady last two meetings wanting to know what some of this stuff is for. So if we went over this real quickly, there's two light poles for about $10,300. There's some meter coupling nuts and check valves for meters for new installs and for replacement. Ferguson Waterworks, there's two different orders for registers for meters that were on a changeout program. Jason wanted something from Monsito. I don't know, that's a monitoring for ADA. Hawk Enterprises is for a crosswalk by Founder's Park. That's about $6,600. Red Bud is for landscaping for around Parish Avenue, the roundabout. And Precision Fence is to fix that where that guy had an accident with no insurance, just east of Parkway going into the gates. Then you got the new printer, which is $5,200. Sutton Asphalt was for street repair and stuff for different things where we had water main breaks, and hopefully that helps the lady that asked the question, that she gets a little more information.
Okay. Ultimately, after these are purchased, they'll show up on the RTP, on the?
No, but when she comes to the meeting, she says, "We just kind of go through it."
Okay.
I said, "Okay, we can read it real quick."
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I will look for a motion to authorize the request to purchase forms, and what am I doing, authorizing Beth to pay those? Do I have that motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the RTPs as presented for the total of $1,518,323.
$122,000.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's changed, I'm sorry.
Just the RTPs as presented?
Yeah, for a total of $122,503.30.
Thank you, Wayne. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Item number two will be the accounts payable vouchers. You have the docket in front of you for the amount of $1,518,323.83. We have a motion to approve the docket.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support for that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Wayne. Questions or comments on the docket? Then I will call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Seven D ordinances and resolutions, ordinance 1772, which we'll consider on first reading. Joe?
I mean, I can, you have?
I'm sorry. Beth?
Yeah, that's fine. So this is an ordinance that was drafted in response to the House Enrolled Act 1002, which authorized the repeal of the utility receipts tax, which was enacted by the General Assembly of the State of Indiana in March of 2022. So essentially, the URT repeal will become effective July 1st, 2022, and it is to help reduce utility bills resulting from the reduced expense for water in our case. They're including things like NIPSCO and things of that nature, but for our town, it's water only. Some background, utilities are subject to the payment of URT. We are required to reduce our rates and charges due to the reduction in the URT. Utilities need to comply with HEA 1002, whether or not we are regulated by the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, which we are not. Non-regulated utilities subject to the payment of URT also need to adjust utility rates and charges to reflect the repeal of the URT. We also have to provide notice in two of our utility bills with very specific language to our affected customers in the next two billing cycles after the adoption of this ordinance, so you'll adopt most likely in July, so August and September must have very specific language. If you took the time to run the calculations out of the ordinance, you'll notice that it doesn't break down to exactly 1.48% reduction. This is because not all of our water fees are subject to the URT tax, and in the annual URT calculation, there's a $1,000 credit. This credit makes it so that the URT payment as a percentage of revenue, it just typically, it doesn't like equal out exactly, because you're trying to kind of compare apples to oranges here, but I'm not sure if anyone ran the calculations, but in case you were wondering why it doesn't amount to an exact 1.48%, that's why.
So is there any reason why we shouldn't adopt this tonight?
We discussed, so usually when you're raising rates, you have a public hearing.
Right.
We're reducing rates, so I highly doubt you're going to get a crowd remonstrating against a reduction of rates.
Right.
But?
And we don't have an option anyway. We still have to do it.
Right.
Technically, you still have to do it.
Are we legally supposed to have a public hearing for this?
You are. So?
So, Beth asked me the question, and my response was, technically, you should have a public hearing and go through the drill. However, 9,999 times out of 10,000, right? Like, you're going up, you're not coming down. I've seen municipalities not do that, right? Because they figured that who's going to complain with a reduction that's, and it's a reduction that is mandated by the state, so they just went ahead and did it on first and second reading. However, technically, we should do it the way Beth's proposing, which is, and I don't know, I don't mean to say that she's proposing, technically, we're supposed to do it this way, right? Where you have a first reading, public hearing, second reading, adopt, move forward. So, you know, if you're asking me, I would hate to see this body criticized for not doing something technically correct even when, and it's 1.48%, it is such a nominal difference. Like, we've already spent probably more time discussing the proper procedure than, right, than the difference to any individual taxpayer. So the legal advice is to do it the right way.
And as long as we're making steps to get as close to that July 1st start date, we're fine, which we're doing, because you're going to go through the process tonight and then again in July. So we're not going to hit the July 1st. We wouldn't have any ways, to be honest, because there's a ton of steps we have to do on our end. We just have to be making reasonable steps.
And first reading is clearly a reasonable step in that direction.
Okay.
And at the second vote, when they vote on it in July, the public hearing could precede that, correct?
Yeah, you would do the public hearing right before.
Yeah. So?
So we'll look for a motion to consider this on first reading, and then schedule the public hearing and second reading on July 27.
Right.
Okay. Do I have that motion?
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number 1772 on first reading.
So moved.
Support, or motion by Mr. Schilling, support by Mr. Orellio. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Item number two would be Resolution 2022-06-22. Joe?
Thank you. So the resolution adopted, or adopts the planning commission's resolution, which was passed unanimously. This amendment to the economic development area is the amendment for the economic development area for the riverfront district. The proposed expansion is to permit an area of the town to be designated as a municipal riverfront development project area for the purposes of providing interested parties to secure alcoholic beverage licenses more easily and to foster new economic development in the proposed area. One of the requirements to designate a riverfront area is that it must be located in a redevelopment or economic development area. The proposed expansion will include an area that was identified to us as a potential riverfront area. The total acreage of the riverfront area is 27.97 acres. The total acreage of the St. John allocation area is 800 acres. This represents about a 3.5% expansion of that area.
Okay. So, just so I'm clear, so this resolution, 2022-06-22, follows up with the plan commission resolution?
Right. And there's more action that will follow this.
Okay, so this is just the next step.
Right. Yeah, so whenever you do an economic development area, allocation area, right, there are steps, and those steps include the redevelopment commission acting first, then the plan commission, then the council, then it goes back for what's called a confirming resolution, right, to the redevelopment. So you're going to, because you're the redevelopment commissioner, you're going to see this again, but we're just kind of going through the process, and this will allow you, we need to expand the existing area because we wanted to, the riverfront area has got to be in an existing area, so we need to expand the existing area. That's the first step. That's what we're doing.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-06-22?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
For that. Thank you, Brian. Comments or questions?
So is this going to be like a one big, large TIF district?
You already have one, you already have a large TIF district.
But we're making it.
You're making it larger.
Making it larger.
But the riverfront area will be a portion of that, so you have an area now, you're making it bigger, and then the riverfront area will be a portion of that expanded area.
What does that do for taxes? Do we get taxes out of it right away? Or does the town get taxes after a period of time? Like, three years down the road, five years?
It's more like after a period of time, because as with any allocation area, right, a base has to be set, and it's set when the allocation is established.
Okay.
So then, once you have improvements, you get the difference between the base allocate, or the base assessment and then the new assessment. But because we pay taxes in arrears in Lake County, it takes at least one year, and most of the time, two or three years, before it catches up, because let's say you established it today, and a developer came in tomorrow and said, "Hey, I'm going to build you whatever," and it's going to be $2 million of increased assessed value, right? It's not going to get assessed, so he's got to build it, right? So that takes time. Then it gets assessed at the end of that year, right? And then you pay taxes in arrears, so you're looking at probably three solid years before you really get the full-on?
Your full amount of taxes.
Right. And I think, just to go a little bit further, with respect to the TIF and the allocation, this doesn't say to every developer that they're going to get a TIF incentive for their development. That's a whole separate mutually exclusive agreement.
That is a negotiable item between the redevelopment commission and that particular developer based on that specific project.
Right. So no TIF, there's no TIF money, you know, going to any developer with respect to the riverfront district. Those are mutually exclusive.
Can I answer your question, Wayne?
Yeah, I just, I'm curious. So here, TIF districts, it takes a lot of money back, and we're trying to get money for the town.
Yep, for sure.
All right. Then I will call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That is approved, four to zero. Item number three, Resolution 2022-06-22B. Joe?
Okay. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the safety board, which was approved by unanimous vote yesterday. This creates the South Lake County Crash Reconstruction Team. Chief Flores stated yesterday that the Lake County is not able to handle the crash investigations due to manpower reductions, and this will help the agencies pool their resources to better provide that service.
Any questions or comments on this?
It's kind of like the regional SWAT team then, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I'd like to do our part.
Okay. So do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-06-22B?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike, is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Item number four, Resolution 2022-06-22C. Joe?
Yeah, so this might seem a little bit like deja vu a little bit, so we approved the JCA back in April to sell the paver. However, after some back and forth with Cedar Lake and their attorney, our attorney, we kind of agreed that a resolution would work best in this case. So the resolution that 2022-04-27D, approving that JCA, is basically moot at this point after we adopt this.
So is this replacing that resolution?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So do I have a motion to adopt or approve Resolution 2022-06-22C?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Item number E is a motion to accept a letter of credit for the Preserves Phase 6 in the amount of $447,918.90. Joe?
Yeah, just so the council knows, this received a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission on June 1st.
Questions or comments? Then I want to entertain a motion to accept the letter of credit from the Preserves Phase 6 in the amount of $447,918.90.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Item number F is a motion to accept a letter of credit for Sublime Estates in the amount of $38,005. Joe?
So same thing here. This comes to the council tonight with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission from their June 1st meeting.
Questions or comments? Then I want to entertain a motion to accept the letter of credit for Sublime Estates in the amount of $38,005.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Item number G, motion to accept the Uniform Conflict of Interest Statement from Mr. Clifford Rowe. Joe?
So as many of you may know, Mr. Rowe is currently the Assistant IT Director. This is done annually by the council.
Yes, it is. Questions or comments? Then I want to entertain a motion to accept the Uniform Conflict of Interest Statement from Mr. Clifford Rowe.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Item number H, motion to approve Robinson Engineering as a municipal separate stormwater system, MS4 engineer, and authorize the town attorney to draft an agreement and authorize the town council president to execute the same for stated purposes. Joe?
So as you know, we're getting moving on our MS4. We need an engineer that we can work with. Robinson Engineering came, recommended for that. Robinson Engineering came recommended for that.
Okay, questions or comments?
Yeah, we don't have the contract in front of us, Joe. I think we should hold off, recommend that we use Robinson Engineering. Great idea for MS4, but let's see what the contract comes out. I mean, we're asking the town council president to execute the paperwork, but let's see the paperwork first. I mean, why say yes? Let's see what what charges are and hourly rates, all that, whatever we gotta have in there.
Is there a problem if we do that?
I mean, that's what, you know, Wayne's wanting to do. I certainly don't have a problem with that. I mean, is it, is my question, is there a contract required with respect to the matter? Otherwise, we could just amend the the motion.
You can appoint them, but I'd want something like, some hourly rate or some not to exceed or some lump sum. Whatever deal you've negotiated should be part of the motion then.
Not to exceed or whatever.
Yeah, something.
Something like that.
And even if I was gonna, you know, a lot of times, engineering firms will send a letter saying, hey, I'm interested in doing this, and it'll be, it'll be this hourly rate.
Buckle it down.
Not or not to exceed whatever, kind of like you do with me every year, right? You say, I write you a letter saying, hey, my hourly rates for the.
Yeah, I mean, to Wayne's point, I don't, I don't think there's a problem with that.
So we can just defer this?
Well, you could move to, I think what Wayne said was move to approve them subject to seeing the rates.
Right.
In some sort of letter format or whatever, right? It was kind of what Wayne was saying.
I like that idea.
I'll have that for it.
I like that idea.
That's not a problem.
Russ won't have a problem with it.
So at least.
Yeah, I think I'll make a motion that we approve Robinson Engineering as municipal separate stormwater engineer and get back with, have him get back with a contract or something, an agreement that we can look at at our next meeting.
Not so much probably a contract, as a rate.
Right, rate, yes.
Rates for all the.
Agreement, yes.
Okay.
So that would be great, thank you.
So, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So do we have support for that motion?
Second.
I'll go with Brian on that one since this is his department.
That sounds good.
All in favor of approving Robinson Engineering pending a quote on their labor rates, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. That is approved five to zero. Reports and correspondence, I'll start at this side. Brian, if you have anything?
I'm fine, Jerry, thank you.
Mike?
The Economic Development Committee, we are, we are hopeful, and I want to thank all their hard work. Our Freedom Fest is gonna take place before our next meeting, so on July 3rd. I'd like everybody thinking to hear my voice to attend and enjoy themselves there. Please come on July 3rd. So I'm thankful for that. Also thankful for the council to approve or continue to approve moving forward our waterfront district. I think that's gonna be a nice economic engine for us in short order, within a couple of years. So I'm excited about that. That's all I have.
Okay, Mike?
I don't have anything.
Wayne?
Skate park's coming along good. Skate system is okay. They're tweaking it right now. They're working on the sanitary side of it. But like I said, the skate park is rolling right along. No pun intended, but it's gonna come out to be a nice park. Other than that, everything else is good.
Okay, so I have a couple of things. Number one, Trittown Safety Village, which is dire shareable in St. John, is going to have a car show on Sunday, July 17th. It'll be at Reader Park. So I wanted to make note of that to you guys. If anybody's interested in sponsorship, you can reach out to the Trittown Safety Village. I have had some questions from residents regarding Earl Drive behind, ending a burg behind McDonald's, and the road is really bad. It's not our road. I think we need to come up with some type of a solution there. And I wanted to get it out to discussion to see what recommendations, what ideas, what can we do to get that road fixed?
So I've seen our emails going back and forth and the information given. I mean, the town, Trittown residents, use that road all the time. It's an essential artery now. You know, my opinion would be, we'd be smart to, and proper, to buy that property and maintain it properly. You know, for it's not dangerous. It's a dangerous road right now. And to expect a private citizen to carry the weight and own that property while, you know, it's used in a public thoroughfare is, I don't think that sounds fair at all. If that was me owning that, I'd be upset.
I think a lot, you can look back at the processes that you have on there. When those processes were set up, some of them 30 years ago, it only benefited the property owner himself. It was never intended to be a town main thoroughfare. And once the town connected 96th Street to Joliet, that has made it a town thoroughfare for all the residents utilizing anything from Alsup all the way up to 96th Street.
That's right.
Trying to avoid Route 41.
And a needed alternative, right? A needed to relieve the main artery there.
But for it to go on like it is, is not the, you can't go on.
Mr. Westling?
So in terms of negotiating or exercising your authority to purchase it, that would be the contemplation of, you know, potential litigation. There's another item that I know Joe was looking to set in executive session with regard to, and I guess I would kind of add this topic to your agenda because if you're serious about, you know, whether it's a negotiation or whatever, there are some steps you need to take, and we can kind of go through that in an executive session.
I would like that.
All right.
So and going forward with that, that road is a private road. There was an agreement that the owner has to maintain the road. And with the discussion that I had with somebody on this board, it depends on the maintenance, what somebody thinks maintenance is. You might say it's just a matter of putting stone down. I might say dig it down. The road, that section that's messed up or bumpy is not white enough like the road across 97th Lane. For us to buy that, and I think there was three bids on it, three or three bids for three different sections, is $230,000, $236,000. I don't think we should be buying somebody's private road. Our building and planning department should go out there and enforce that if it's enforceable. I think the property was bought for a dollar. And I think that piece of property, the appraisal on it was $83,000. Well, I'll give up the road for for $83,000 if I paid a dollar for it. But the agreement was, he's supposed to pay for it.
So I'm just trying to.
He's supposed to maintain it.
So. So that's the type of discussion that I'm talking about, right? Like, all those, that's a reasonable position, Wayne? And and those are probably best suited for an executive session about, all right, are we gonna, are we gonna, are we gonna use our code enforcement authority? Or are we gonna proceed along this path of purchasing it? If we are gonna purchase it, is what's there sufficient? Or are we gonna have to purchase actually more than what's curb to curb? Because our regular streets are wider.
That street, yeah, should be three feet wider approximately.
So those are all like really valid things that need to kind of be vetted, you know? My suggestion would be that they be vetted in an executive session.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
The other thing, are you gonna, Beth, are you gonna cover this in your comments?
I can, or you can?
I just, it's it's really nice. We got our tax distributions, and you laid out the details, and I appreciate it. It's very simple, easy to read. And I just wanted to say thank you for that. And that's all I have, so Beth?
I was just gonna mention that we did receive our 2022 spring tax distributions. Technically, a little bit early. We usually receive them closer to the end of the month, so that was a nice surprise. Thank you for commenting on the layout. I definitely appreciate that. I guess the only other thing I would mention is we did submit our pre-budget worksheets that needed to be uploaded into Gateway, so that was completed this week. It's due by June 30th, so that's done for us, and that's about all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank taxpayers for paying it because all that money came from their pockets.
Their hard work, right?
And you gotta give the county credit for getting it here.
Well, you gotta get it, get better to take it.
So I had a question. I noticed the one, I was looking back and forth. I goes, oh, different. I noticed the lovely new design you have here, your logo for the Pluck Treasurer.
Yes.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Okay, Joe?
Thank you. So due to the hot summer weather conditions, the town of St. John is taking a proactive approach to water management and conservation. Effective immediately, we are implementing following sprinkling management plan for the residents and businesses. Number one, addresses ending in an even number may only sprinkle in water lawns on even number days of the month. Two, addresses ending in odd numbers may only sprinkle in water lawns on odd number days of the month. Residents are asked to refrain from sprinkling during the hours of 3 to 7. If residents have an irrigation system, please remember to reset your timers and programming accordingly. Even though the sprinkler management plan is temporary, residents are asked to fully comply at this time. The town of St. John will notify residents when the plan is curtailed on our website, www.stjohnin.gov. The town has also suspended its bulk water purchasing to conserve water use for the community. The town splash pad will remain open. However, our staff will be adjusting hours if necessary to ensure that we have adequate water supply. Notifications are being sent out to residents in their water bills. We appreciate your cooperation to help conserve water during a high summer demand. The town of St. John continues to work to improve its water capacity, storage, and treatment facilities to meet the demands. As a side note, the town of St. John pumped over 7 million gallons of water in a 24-hour period this week, three times more than our average daily amount. This is more than the city of East Chicago, which has a population of 28,000. So it's a lot of water. So we're just trying to be responsible and do some conservation. Also want to ask residents to please be courteous to neighbors with fireworks. Be respectful of the time that you're doing those as well. We want everyone to be safe and have a happy Independence Day. Thank you.
Okay, one other thing that I wanted to bring up, and I saw, I think the email came out today or yesterday that we got the permit from IDIM for well number nine?
We did. There's a lot of stuff on that, but we did get it.
I saw that, finally. So, all right. So that's kind of exciting because we've been kind of playing with this for a little while. So the state finally came through on that one, okay.
Excuse me, Jerry, did we get a permit for eight already, Wayne?
I think it's gonna be, they tried to roll it all into one.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, how did nine get ahead of eight?
It was easier to do it one big project than than one little one after another. They they approved everything, but now it'll probably won't take effect where we might get some water out of it. Either one will be maybe spring of next year. You still gotta build a building. There's shortages of pipe and stuff.
How did eight get avoided?
Well, eight has a lot of sulfur in it.
Oh, okay, it's a different.
So it's been done about four years ago. And because the the rules and regulations now, we had to jump through some more hoops, and it was like a new well, like we were drilling. So we had to take care of that. We took care of nine. Nine will be re-drilled, and then it'll depend on the quality of water for nine, how we're gonna treat stuff. Are we gonna add another building? Are we gonna treat at nine? But that's all dependent on what we find with nine. Once we find out that, then we can plan some more. But building a building, I think the buildings could be 40 by 40. There's different ways to treat the water, liquid chlorine or gas chlorine. So it's gonna depend on what we find in the water.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian.